Initial data here from Noel.
This is our January 2018 budget performance report as of 1/31/18, which would put us at seven months out of the year. So a little ways over 56 percent. You can see that rent and lease of properties under revenue were at 79 percent. Charge for fees and service were at 80 percent. So the revenue is looking very good. Sale of property, we're at 60 percent for the year. In the recreational development area, revenue is coming, that's the mining of East Lake. It's at 71 percent. So again, we're improving that lake area as well as making funds for the city of Waterloo. And under expenses, we're just at 59 percent, 50 percent. So we're running a little bit lower than where we should be at in the budget this year, which is good news. So the financial report's looking very good.
Okay, thank you. And now you can go back to your, what you were doing before. Well, thank you guys for being here at four o'clock, too. We'll call the meeting to order now. We have two commissioners joining us on phone, Bob Tyson and Sue Flynn. So we do now have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the approval of the March 6, 2018 agenda. Are there any changes to it?
No.
Okay. Then we need a motion for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 6, 2018. Those were in the packet that was mailed out to the commission members last week. If there are no changes, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved or moved?
Okay, Bob made it first. Mr. Tyson gets the motion. Who wants the second?
I'll second.
Good. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 That carries. Now we come to new business, public hear, excuse me, public hearings. The first item is a request by Hope M. Anderson to rezone 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural to R1 One and Two Family Residence District located at 5805 Kimball Avenue, between Kimball Avenue and Highway 21 and north of East Orange Road. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, this is Hyburger with the staff report. The applicant is Hope Anderson. The applicant is requesting to rezone the 129.16 acre property in question for the purpose of creating a 210 lot subdivision with three land tracts known as the Paradise Estates addition. The request for the rezone would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Would appear that the proposed residential use would blend in well with the surrounding neighborhood, which consists of single-family homes, vacant land, and Orange Elementary School. The proposed rezone area would appear to have some impact on the surrounding pedestrian and traffic conditions in the area. Mohammed Elijah with the City of Waterloo Traffic Operations indicated the need for a traffic study for the proposed rezone area. The proposed development would be served by Kimball Avenue, which consists of 6.5 inches of Portland cement concrete on a six-inch granular base with a four-and-a-half-inch asphalt cement concrete overlay for a total of 11 inches of pavement, and East Orange Road, which contains nine inches of asphalt cement concrete treated base with overlay for a total of 12 inches of pavement, which are classified as collector's reach, which means they were designed and constructed for higher volumes of traffic, and Highway 21, which is classified as a minor arterial. Kimball Avenue has an average annual traffic count of 1,730 vehicles per day, and East Orange Road has an average annual traffic count of 630 vehicles per day. The development shall also be served by local roads, which include Lipti Boulevard, Paradise Boulevard, Moonlight Ridge, Road A, Road B, Road C, Road D, Road E, and Road F. The proposed rezone area will consist of sidewalks throughout the development, and there has been a discussion regarding having a pedestrian access that connects the proposed development to Orange Elementary School. The Shawshue Road Trail is approximately 2,500 feet to the north of the proposed rezone area and will not be connected to the proposed development area at this time. The proposed development will be connected by sidewalks. The proposed rezone area has been Zoned A1 Agricultural District since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1969. Surrounding land uses and zoning designations are as follows. To the north, south, and east is vacant land, Zoned A1 Agricultural District. To the west is single-family homes and Orange Elementary School, Zoned R1 and One and Two Family Residence District. The surrounding area consists predominantly of vacant land and single homes, with a few homes being built along A and B Avenue. No buffers are required for the rezone area. The rezone request would appear to have impact on drainage in the area, especially considering that approximately six lots and three tracts are partially in the 100-year floodplain for the 129.16 acre development. However, draft of the preliminary plat for the Paradise Estates addition does denote three stormwater detention areas, with a track on the southwest side, a track on the northeast side, a track on the southeast side of the proposed development. In addition, 15 feet and 20 feet stormwater drainage easements are identified in the rear and side yards for various lots. The area would likely be able to be removed from the floodplain staff status after the area is graded. The applicant has indicated they will work with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources to ensure the special flood hazard area does not contain any floodway. Approximately 90 percent of the rezone area in question is not located within the special flood hazard area, as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map. However, portions of tracts and lots are located in the 100-year floodplain as part of a Zone A unstudied stream. Orange Elementary is directly adjacent to the proposed rezone area. The area is also served by Hoover Middle School and West High School. Lipti Park is approximately located 1,300 feet to the west of the proposed subdivision. There has also been a discussion regarding having a pedestrian connection between the school and the proposed development. There is an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer main, 12-inch water main, and a 15-inch storm sewer located underneath Kimball Avenue. In addition, there's an existing 10-inch sanitary sewer main, 6-inch drain tile, and 12-inch water main underneath East Orange Road. A 15-inch sewer main that transitions to an eight-inch sewer line crosses Highway 21 to serve the development. Matt Mayer with Waterworks indicated that there is enough capacity to serve the rezone area, but adequate water pressure may be an issue in some areas. The developers and engineer has suggested placing in-home booster pumps for properties that lack adequate water pressure. There were concerns regarding the 10-inch sanitary sewer in East Orange Street about it being too shallow to service the area, so options will have to be analyzed to determine the best way to serve the southern portion of the development. The future land use map designates the majority of the rezone area as low-density residential and agricultural residential potential. Along Highway 21 is mixed residential, low, medium, high-density residential, professional office, and compatible commercial. The applicant is requesting to rezone a total of 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District as part of a 210 lot subdivision. Lot sizes will range from 12,632 square feet to 56,628 square feet in size. The rezone area is also adjacent to Orange Elementary School, which gives parents the option of walking or biking their children to school. The area is also adequately served transportation-wise by Highway 21, Kimball Avenue, and East Orange Road. Proposed development will also meet the setback in law site and lot size requirements for the R1 district. The applicant had a previous planning and zoning commission meeting on February 6, 2018, requested to rezone 129.16 acres, including 105.3 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District, Track B, 10.85 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R3 Multiple Residence District, Track D, and 3.51 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R4 Multiple Residence District, Track A, and 9.47 acres from A1 Agricultural District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, Track C. It was moved by Hall and seconded by Flynn to recommend that Tracks A, C, and D be rezoned to R1 CZ and Track B rezoned to R1. Motion carried unanimously in order to better address concerns raised by neighbors. The applicant is now requesting to rezone the entire 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District with no CZ conditional zoning or any other zoning classifications being requested at this time. At the meeting, neighbors had concerns regarding increased traffic, water pressure, drainage, impacts to the character of the Orange Township neighborhood, urban sprawl, protecting existing agricultural ground, housing covenants, land uses other than R1, home prices, et cetera. The applicant will be also meeting with the neighborhood prior to the planning and zoning meeting on March 6, 2018. The applicant will be submitting a subdivision plat for Paradise Estates that coincides with his own air request, but will be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a future date. In regards to the technical review committee, Lori Golliver with Blackhawk County Office of Emergency Management questioned whether Orange Elementary School had enough student capacity for the proposed rezone, 210 lot and a three-track development. The Waterloo School District indicated that Orange Elementary has adequate student capacity to address existing students and the new development. Mohammed Elijah with the City of Waterloo Traffic Operations indicated the need for a traffic study for the proposed rezone area. Stafford indicated in the conditions section that a traffic study will need to be performed prior to the submittal of the final plat. Hyburger noted neighbor did have concerns regarding average lot size. Alex Byers indicated lot sizes are based on marketing and current infrastructure prices. The engineering department had concerns regarding only having one through road to the north and would like to see one more of the proposed cul-de-sacs pushed through to create an additional exit. Staff recommendation, therefore, staff recommends that the request to rezone a total of 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 One and Two Family Residence District be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request does not appear to have an impact on pedestrian and traffic conditions within the surrounding area. And subject to the following condition, a traffic study will be required for the proposed rezone area prior to the submittal of the final plat. And that is Hyburger with the staff report.
Any questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what, I didn't open the meeting. I apologize. We're gonna backtrack a little bit because we need to open the hearing. The time is 4:30, and a hearing is scheduled at this time on the request by Hope M. Anderson to rezone 129.16 acres from A1 Agricultural to R1 One and Two Family Residence District located next to 5805 Kimball Avenue, between Kimball and Rid, and Highway 21 and north of East Orange Road. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on February 20th, 2018." We have a motion to receive and place this on file. Second? Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, that carries. Thank you. Now, we'll have, if the applicant is here or someone representing the applicant, would you like to come forward and tell us? Yes, Sue?
I have a question to, for the traffic operations and engineering. When is it looking like that traffic study will be performed?
Want to respond?
This is Anderson with staff. So what he has recommended is this is the rezoning action, then there'll be the preliminary plat, then the final plat, and the traffic engineer is saying he'd like to see the traffic report for him to review before they submit the final plat. So I would imagine, depending upon their timeline for doing the preliminary plat and the final plat, it'll probably be within this next month.
Okay, thank you.
This is Castle, sorry, this is Castle. I have a question for staff, too. The engineering department had concerns regarding only one through road. Would that be addressed during the traffic study?
This is Anderson with staff. It could definitely be addressed during the traffic study, and then it, obviously, it's in the plating process as opposed to the rezoning process as we're looking at that layout of the preliminary and final plats.
This is Wilbur. I have a question regarding, I don't know if it's for staff or if it's for Mr. Muller, regarding his letter. It says that there are, the pressures are high enough in terms of the water to maintain positive pressures regarding rigidity and health and safety requirements. Was the school also considered as part of that and how their pressure would be affected as well?
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Matt Muller with the Waterworks. Yeah, they're included in that consideration, so they'd be considered a customer in the area and they are a part of the pressures and demands.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, now, if the applicant or someone representing the applicant would like to come forward and give us whatever information you would like to give us, we'd appreciate it. Just tell us who you are and who you're with.
Good afternoon, my name is Alex Bauer. I'm with Fairgram Engineering. We are working with Mr. Anderson to get a development out here in the Orange Township. We've have taken a good look at this. We've been working with the planning and zoning department for nearly a year now, so this is definitely not the first iteration that you've seen. And through that process, we have worked through many revisions to get to where we're at now, and which has led to what you saw in the February Planning and Zoning Commission. And after that commission meeting, we saw, you know, such a huge cry out against the R1 CZ. We felt that it was just best to come back through and rezone everything to R1, get a nice clean straight, excuse me, a nice clean slate and just move forward. If, I'm not sure if Planning Commission had any questions directly towards the developer or the civil engineering side of things.
Anyone have any questions?
This is Flynn.
Okay.
And I was just wondering from the developer if he could explain a little bit how they're determining the lot sizes.
Well, in this case, we, one of the things that Mr. Anderson wanted to do is have something for everybody in this development. And so, in order to be inclusive, but not become too small, quarter acre lots was the target value. That was a value where we could maintain roughly $230,000 to $280,000 valuation within the development or above. So we, when we looked at the layout, we configured it so that we would stair-step basically up. And so we have quarter acre lots, and we go up into the .6 and 3/4 inch, or, excuse me, 3/4 acre range in this entire development. The average lot size is .46 acres.
And this is Anderson with staff. Just a note, so remember, this is just the zoning action, so the actual lot layout on here is very helpful to see how they're planning on putting in the plat. Today's action actually won't approve that lot layout. It will just approve the rezoning for them to move ahead with the plat in the future.
Correct, thank you, Noel. Thank you, that's all I needed.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this issue? Please come to the mic and give us your name, address, who you represent, and make your comments briefly.
Barbara Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive. I do want to thank the developers for changing everything to R1. I really appreciate that. I do want to bring up one point, though, is that when they do the traffic study, one of the reasons, I guess, that maybe the neighborhood, or that I am thinking this could be a positive step, is because I would like to see a bus lane put onto the north side of this addition so we could get our bus traffic straightened out. I guess I was surprised this whole Orange School was developed without an exit, a bus lane, and I didn't know anything about zoning at that time, so. So I'm just hoping that we can put a bus lane off the north side and going into these streets so we can get that craziness that has the buses going in the left lane and the cars out the right lane of the same driveway. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come forward?
Trudy Friedley, 145 West Orange Road. Mr. Anderson listened to our neighborhood concerns previously and made changes to his addition plan based on our input, and again, we do greatly thank him for doing so. And as a group, we recently did have an opportunity to meet personally with he and his development team, and he shared with us that his vision for this development is to have something special and significantly different from other developments in the area. He wants it to be something to be proud of, and we share that vision with him. Because of that shared vision, we continue to strongly encourage him to reconsider the minimum lot size for the development, making it comparable to the common one-half acre lot size in the already existing Orange neighborhood, our neighborhood. A member of his team encouraged us to drive through an already existing area of the city with lot sizes comparable to the smaller lot sizes proposed for Orange, that area being the streets of Linda, Wendy, and Nancy Rhodes. My husband and I did that, and we noted that they do have some very nice homes on those lots. But we also noted, however, that a good number of those homes have a privacy fence on at least one side because the lots are so small, they can see in their neighborhood's homes without it. That's not our current neighborhood in Orange. You don't see privacy fences. We enjoy the opportunity to visit with our neighbors in our large yards and at the same time not be concerned we're invading their personal space. We're talking about a neighborhood culture, a culture we're proud of and would like to share with our new neighbors in the future development. We're also very knowledgeable that the lot sizes and related pieces, prices are based on the marketing and current infrastructure costs. But Mr. Anderson also shared with us at our meeting that he isn't developing this land area based on a personal need for monetary gain. Therefore, we once again ask that before finalizing plan proposal, the minimum lot size be expanded to one-half acre, fulfilling Mr. Anderson's, the Orange neighborhoods' and the city's vision to make this area special and one we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Monique Walters, 5404 Kimball Avenue. Just have a couple of things. First of all, I want to reiterate what Trudy just said about Mr. Anderson and his development team were gracious enough to meet with us last Wednesday, I believe, and I did come away with a different perspective on his vision, and I appreciated the time and listening to our concerns. And so I think the neighborhood is going to be better because of that. But again, I think Trudy's was, her concerns are very valid. Question I have on the plat here, and I know this is not regard, you know, the meeting and not plating, but for the 10 acres in the northwest corner, where is the exit or an entrance to that? There's nothing in the plating here to show where that entrance is going to be.
This is Anderson with staff. So not having any more information than that, at this point, I would imagine it's coming off of Kimball as a private driveway, since they're not showing a connection to a roadway unless they were to reserve an easement or something like that somewhere.
Okay, and that, is there any prior approval that needs to be done with that since it's going to be a developed subdivision?
No, actually, the No, actually, the driveway process would go through the engineering department for approval as they lay out the site plan of where the house would be and all that.
Okay. And then, let's see, the other thing I just, a couple of the things I wanted to bring up on the floodplain map, can, do you have that? Just something I wanted to mention that my husband George was not able to be here, but he did bring this up at the meeting we had on Wednesday. The, his mother, Susan Walters, owns the property to the north of the plat. And it was brought, he brought this up and to the, I think, I don't know, I think you were the-
I was there and City Engineer was there as well.
About the drainage that comes off that, I guess, their, our property would be the southeast corner off that, that there's tile in there and that that needs to be a consideration. And the developer did say that that would be, I just wanted it on record that it was brought up and pointed out when the time comes.
And I think he talked to Alex at the meeting as well, and that'll be something we'll be looking at in the drainage plan for the preliminary plat as to how that tile line and all that drains into there and how it's accommodated.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that while as a resident of the area, we knew that this was going to occur, and we knew that that was the, the future was to put a neighborhood around Orange Township. But I think it was brought up at the last meeting about urban sprawl, quote unquote. And I just want to let you know that our family with my father-in-law's passing away in October, they, for part of the estate, they had to have land and soils, soil samples taken from our property. And while I don't know all the details, what I do know is that apparently in the state of Iowa, the rating average is 70 to 72. I don't know what those numbers mean, but our property, the farmland, is, has a rating of 97. So we are, and I can't imagine that Buzz Anderson's property is, it has to be in that ballpark. So we are taking prime agricultural farmland again and developing it. There's going to be a time where we're not going to have any farmers because we're going to keep pushing and pushing and pushing. So I just wanted you to know how valuable and how soil-rich that ground is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Bob Manning. I'm the executive officer for the Cedar Valley Home Builders Association. And the points well made of the previous speaker, I think back of when Orange Township was first developed and the school was built out there and the other homes were built out there 60 or 70 years ago, the people must have wondered about that also. From the home building perspective, we admire the beautiful sized lots out there. We know that the streets are approximately 24 feet wide with a thinner layer of coating or surface, and I'm not an engineer, I'm an ex-banker. But the, the streets are good out there. The street requirements by current city code are much more stringent than what's going to be across the streets. Mr. Anderson's lots will be 30 foot, 31 foot wide streets with curb and gutter. And if we didn't have to have the curb and gutter and the 31 foot streets, and we could go back to a 24 foot street like what's in Orange Township now, there'd be much less cost and the lot size could be larger for the same cost that a developer. So we think there's going to be some improvements on the, on the east side of Orange and actually honor some complimentary things on the west side so you can have of Orange, of Kimball, I'm sorry. So you can have the larger lots that many of us prefer. But the necessity for the infrastructure and the cost on the east side of Kimball is different than the west side, so it's not comparing oranges to oranges. That was really poor, wasn't it? Could we strike that, Mr. Chairman?
I like that, Bob. That was good.
Apples to apples.
That's my sense of humor there.
That's how it goes, yeah. The other thing, as the exec officer for the home builders, we contacted Mr. Anderson about a year ago, and we said, schools are magnets. That's what attracts housing. And that's why many of the people in Orange live out there now because they were so close to the school. And we think that's a very positive and yet envious position. We've toured Cedar Rapids, we've toured Des Moines, we've, Cedar Falls is part of the area that we're responsible for. We saw three houses sell last year during the parade of homes, the last week in August, during that four-day period of time that are right around the new Bess Aldridge School in Cedar Falls. Three offers written in a four-day period of time because they wanted to be close to a school. We think there's a lot of folks in Waterloo and the Cedar Valley that would like to be close to a school. We don't think a thing that will happen in Waterloo is going to be a detriment to what's happening in Hudson and what's happening in Cedar Falls now. We think we can actually increase the size of the construction market in the communities. So we're not looking for competition between the communities as such as much as options in Waterloo and Cedar Falls and Hudson. And we consider Dyke part of the Cedar Valley even though it's in a different county. There's a lot of people at Covenant Hospital that would like to live closer to their employment. There's a lot of people that work at VGM that would like to be closer to their employment. And closer to their employment and closer to the schools, that's a natural for families. And we're excited about it and we want to, and because of that, you know what, we should go back and apologize for not being here a month ago. There was some miscommunication and the development team intended to be at the planning and zoning. And so those of you that were here, we want to apologize for not being here because in no way did that reflect how we feel about this development or how we feel about the neighbors. And we're glad that they've reached out and said, hey, we don't like everything, but we'd like to sit down and talk. So we, we wanted to sit down and talk and had a meeting to do that and took a lot of the comments into, into place in planning this. And Mr. Anderson is fortunate that he doesn't have to do this solely for a return, but there's a certain point where you do expect to have some return on things. If he sold this to other developers, we're afraid that the lot size would be .22 acres or .19 acres like we see in West Des Moines. Those are very tight housing down there, and that's something that may be coming. But as a developer, he's resisted that, and he's wanted to see larger sized lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Moss, 113 Lick D Boulevard. We moved out to the Orange area about 22 years ago. I know a lot of other people have been there a lot longer. But the reason why we did move out there, it attracted us so much, was the community itself. It was close to a school even though our kids didn't go to that school. But the lot size, no fences, there wasn't any reason for a fence, but the lot size really attracted us to it. At the meeting the other, last week, Mr. Anderson said he's really not doing it for the money. He'd rather, if, he really doesn't want to go through this type of a, I don't know if he considers it a hassle or not, but it is a major project to be concerned about in the community. I would really stress to Mr. Anderson and whenever you do the plat, to see if you can't kind of give a little bit on the lot size, not be so locked in on it. I understand the curb and gutter that you have to do on the east side of Kimball, but that's what attracted us there. And now, just within the last five years or so, we're seeing a turnaround, new, younger generation that's moving in buying existing houses there, and that's why they're, they're there. That's why they're coming. And to make your point even better, with VGM being around, wanting to be closer to their work and also Covenant, why don't you give them a slice of Orange?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Moss, 113 Lick D Boulevard. I just want to say to Mr. Anderson's team, I too would like them just to relook at the southeast corner to see if there's any way they can give, any way they can increase those lot sizes. Yes, we moved out there because of the lot size and the current privacy that was out there. No, our kids didn't go to school there, but they had fun out there and it was a very nice neighborhood and still is. So I would just ask to relook at the southeast corner. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Mr. Holdeman. Thank you very much for the team working with us on putting together some stuff. I would like to point out that really appreciate the work that Matt has done in the last month or so.
I apologize, but could you please give us your name and address?
Mike Henning, 138 Side Hill Drive.
Thank you.
All right, okay. But Matt has done a- This guy's done us a great job. He came out at the meeting a week or so ago and really gave us a good explanation of flow and of pressure and that stuff, and he's worked to put together an interim-type proposal and has submitted a letter to go with your plating stuff, however, with this stuff, however that works, to maybe get us a, at least a somewhat of a water pressure boost within the next four years or so. And so hopefully that can move forward and any way that the neighborhood can help him, Matt, with that, we'd be happy to do that. So that's all I got.
Okay, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll entertain a motion to close the hearing. Then we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Oppose, same sign? Okay. Discussion.
I would like to just make a request of staff in terms, again, I think it's been reiterated, the concerns with the traffic study. Two factors, that timing is considered, making sure that it's not during spring break for either Orange or Hawkeye, and also before school lets out for the year. But also the coverage area, I'm not sure what, right now it encompasses, but I would encourage the traffic, if it possible, to cover East Orange Road from Highway 21 to Ainsborough because there has been an increased amount of a traffic on East Orange Road past Kimball as well. And even though that's not directly within the development, I do see it impacting with the increased houses out there, that that would, that greatly, the access would be increased. And so I would just encourage that to be considered too in the traffic study.
This is Flynn.
Yes, Sue.
And I just wanted to reiterate what the last speaker said too, that I think, and Mr. Manning, and it's a, this was a collaborative effort that I think people have worked together to address concerns and to also listen to each other. And so I just want to commend all five for presenting questions, getting questions answered, and just being proactive about this and trying to work to a solution that will best be for the community, not necessarily to each individual person. So I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve the rezone, a total of 129.15 acres from A1 Agriculture District to R1, one and two family residential districts, approved for the reasons as stated with the condition that a traffic study be requested or be required for the repurpose, sorry, for the proposed rezone prior to the submission of the final plat.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm not sure which one had been made at first, but, well, do you want to just have Jamie second it?
Sure.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to the next hearing. It is not, yes, Sue?
This is Sue, and I just wanted to verify that we have a quorum because my phone is going to die real soon.
Yes, we do. Thank you. Are you going to sign off?
I will sign off then because I am at 8% battery, so.
Okay, thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, the time is now 4:57, and the hearing is scheduled at this time on a request by Heinold Hog Markets LLC for a site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District for the construction of a 12,375 square foot livestock processing facility located adjacent to 720 North Elk Run Drive. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on February 20th, 2018." Do we have a motion to accept and place this on file?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, Bob seconded. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? The meeting is, I'm sorry, the hearing is open. We have a staff report.
This is Dornoff with staff. This is a request to construct a 12,375 square foot livestock processing facility. The request to construct a livestock processing facility would not appear to have a negative impact around the area as largely industrial and agricultural. Pro site plan amendment would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular pedestrian conditions in the area. The site is served by Elk Run Road, which is classified as a minor arterial north of Martin Luther King Drive and a local street south of Martin Luther King Drive, and Martin Luther King Drive is classified as a minor arterial. The area in question is, was rezoned from A1 Agricultural District to M2P Planned Industrial District on April 10th, 1989. Surrounding land uses and the zoning designations are as follows. To the north is commercial on the Union Pacific Railroad, Zone M2P Planned Industrial District. To the south is unincorporated Blockhead Clanny Agricultural and Shooting Range, Zone Agricultural. To the east is unincorporated Blackhawk County Industrial Zone CM, Commercial Manufacturing District, and Agricultural Zone A, Agricultural District. And to the west is Industrial Zone M2P Planned Industrial District. It will be necessary for a stormwater detention plan to be submitted to the engineering department. The area consists largely of industrial uses, built between 1952 and 2009. A small portion of the far east side of the property is located in a Zone X, 500-year floodplain, as indicated by the Federal Insurance Administration's Flood Insurance Rate Map, community number 190025283F dated July 18th, 2011. Nearest schools are Highland Elementary's located 2.6 miles to the southwest, Bungar Middle Schools located 2.42 miles to the southwest, and East High School located 3.6 miles to the west. The nearest open space is Spider Park located 2.4 miles to the south. There is a 30-inch storm sewer line located in the east side of Elk Run Road. The future land use map does indicate this area is industrial, and the pro site plan amendment would be in accordance with the comprehensive- and the site plan amendment would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The applicant is proposing to build a 12,375 square foot pole building to be used as a livestock processing pass-through facility located in the M2P Planned Industrial District located south of 720 North Elk Run Drive Road. The proposed building will include a 30-foot by 30-foot, 900 square foot office, a 15-foot by 45-foot, 675 square foot dry manure storage area, and a 120-foot by 90-foot, 10,800 square foot main staging area. The primary purpose of the building will be to bring livestock in that is not accepted by Tyson and sort them and send them out. The applicant is proposing to have concrete pads where trucks will pull in against the building, but requests the rest of the parking and truck maneuvering area be gravel, which was approved by a variance by the Board of Adjustment at their February 27th, 2018 meeting. The applicant is proposing two detention ponds, one located on the west side of property, located adjacent to Elk Run Road, and a second larger one located to the east side of the property. Zoning ordinance requires one parking spot for every two employees. The site plan shows two regular and one handicap parking spots. According to the applicant, there are usually only one or two employees working in the facility at any one time, so adequate parking is provided. During tech review, engineering asked about sanitary sewer, which the applicant engineer responded that it would be on a septic system. It was noted by fire department that if building over 12,000 square feet may require the facility to have sprinklers. However, the actual requirements will depend on the final design of the building, which will be determined during the building permit review, which is not part of the site plan amendment process. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for the site plan amendment to the, in the M2P Planned Industrial District be approved for the following reasons. The request is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions in the area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact surrounding the area with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, including but not limited, parking landscape is screened and drainage, and the applicant would need to submit records showing that the facility does have permission to use the Watco parking, Watco-owned driveway.
Any questions for staff? Thank you, John. Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant here, and would you like to make any comments?
Steve Peterson, live at 1310 Foxridge Road in Dyke, Iowa. General manager for the company of Heinold Hog Markets. And again, we discussed some of this a week ago, but this will be a pass-through facility. There won't be any slaughter at this facility. It's for live hogs. They'll come in live, they'll leave live. We expect 200 to 300 head a day, max. Probably in an area of 6 to 12 trucks in and out. So, we won't have a big impact compared to what's coming in next door. And the animals that we do process are the ones that won't meet the slaughter criteria for Tyson. So, it'll be off-quality, light hogs, heavy hogs, animals that have a blemish on them that they don't want to process. So, size-wise, we don't have that in concrete yet. So, if we need to adjust something because of the sprinkling system, we certainly can do that. But again, this isn't a pit building. There's not a confined animal feeding operation. Be dry manure, wood chips, and won't be a lot of bedding or a lot of, because the animals won't be in the facility for more than probably 10 to 12 hours. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson?
This is Wilbur. I don't know if it's for Mr. Peterson and/or his staff. In terms of the septic system, are there special requirements, given that it will be, there will be livestock, or is that?
This is Schrader with staff. The applicant can expound upon this, but the septic system won't be for the animals at all. It'll just be for the office and, you know, the bathroom facility for the office. The livestock, manure will go into the dry, the 600 square foot dry holding facility, which would then, I mean, the applicant can address, but it'll basically be hauled out and disposed of.
Just the septic will be for people?
Thank you.
For the office, huh?
Unless you can train them in 12 hours, that'd be kind of cool.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and-
Garth Carlson, Vets Truck Wash. I applaud more business for the community. I just have them check into our water pond because it goes south into theirs. So, make sure whoever's engineering to just double-check that ours will flow with theirs, which I'm sure you're doing. I just want to double-check is all. And then, a few more trucks ain't going to be much, but it's kind of busy out there already, so we might just want to look into that a little bit. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Chair votes aye. This meeting is, or in favor, this hearing is closed. Any discussion amongst commissioners regarding this issue?
I'd make a motion to approve the request for site plan amendment in the M2P Planned Industrial District for the reasons as stated, with the conditions that the final plat, plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera. And the applicant will need to submit records showing that the facility has the permission to use the Watco-owned driveway.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Chair votes in favor. That motion is carried. One other public hearing, and just to let you guys know that this public hearing number three and our special permits number one are, we're going to give the staff report together because they're essentially the same. But we will have to act on each separately. Okay? It is now 5:09, I believe, PM, and a hearing is scheduled at this time on a request by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated on the behalf of Friends of Faith Retirement Homes Incorporated to rezone 14.5 acres from R2, one and two-family residence district and R3, multiple residence district, to R4, RP Planned Residence District located at 600 Park Lane to allow for the redevelopment of an existing retirement home community. At this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and map were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on February 20th, 2018." Do we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? And chairs in favor? Okay, staff report.
This is Western with staff. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The use is existing and is being completely redeveloped with mostly new buildings. The redevelopment will include four-story buildings. However, they are buffered from existing residential to the west by duplexes. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The proposed redevelopment will not significantly change the total number of units from what currently exists and may be up to 30 units or less than the existing facility. There is no screening or buffers required for the rezone request. However, the site plan shows significant landscape plantings throughout the redevelopment. A water retention plan will need to be submitted to the engineering department prior to a building permit being issued. The area in question is predominantly not located within a special flood area as indicated by the Federal Insurance Flood Insurance Rate Map. A small portion of the proposed future pool building is shown extending into the floodway of Dry Run Creek. The applicant would need to get the area removed from the floodway status or obtain a NORI certification and be approved for a variance before this future addition could be built. According to the City of Waterloo plat books, there appears to be a sanitary sewer lines along the north and south right-of-way of Southbrook Drive. Storm sewer lines are also located in a portion of the north and south right-of-way lines of Southbrook Drive. An eight-inch water line is located north of Southbrook. A 10-inch sewer line runs through the middle of the facility that will be relocated as a part of the redevelopment. Therefore, a new utility easement for the sewer line that will be relocated and needs to be dedicated and the existing utility easement for sewer line be removed. The applicant has indicated that the dedication and vacation of the utility easements for the sewer line will be done at a later date. The future land use map designates this area as mixed residential, low, medium, high residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial. The request appears to be in conformance with the future land use map, a component of the comprehensive plan. The R4 RP Planned Residence District is intended and designed to provide a means for the redevelopment of tracts of land on a unit basis, allowing greater flexibility and diversification of land uses and building locations than the conventional single-lot method. Permitted uses within the R4 RP district would be single-family, two-family, and multiple-family dwellings. The site plan submitted shows existing campus being demolished and rebuilt in multiple phases, which includes replacing the existing two-story buildings with several four-story buildings, some two-story buildings, and some one-story duplexes. The first phase of the project is to demolish existing wing of the independent living building, garages and outbuildings, and the completion of the site work and utility installations. The second phase includes the construction of a new four-story, 154,300 square foot independent living building with 41 garage spaces. The third phase includes the demolition of the remaining independent living buildings and consolidate services to the existing two-story, 72-suite skilled nursing building. Phase four will include the construction of a two-story, 72-suite, 57,700 square foot skilled nursing facility and parking while maintaining full operation and services to the existing two-story, 72-suite skilled nursing building during construction. Phase five will include the demolition of the former skilled nursing building and the completion of the site work. Site plan also shows future development that will include a two-story, 36 to 48-suite assisted living building, new hard surface parking areas and drives, a four-story, 30-suite apartment building with a 20-car garage, three-to-four-story, 20-to-30-suite apartment building with a 20-car garage, and the demolition of a two, of two existing cottages and the construction of two new two-unit cottages. The site plan also shows the future construction of an attached pool building. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 36 parking stalls for the independent living areas. Site plan shows 41 garage spaces to be built now with another 40 to be built in the future. For the remainder of the facility, the zoning ordinance requires one parking space for each four patient beds and one parking space for each two employees on the maximum working shift. There would appear to be sufficient parking proposed to meet minimum requirements. This is approximately a $70 million reinvestment into the site that has existed for 30 or more years. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated on the behalf of Friends of Faith Retirement Homes Incorporated to rezon 14.5 acres from R2, one and two-family Residence District and R3, multiple residence district, to R4 RP Planned Residence District located at 600 Park Lane to allow for the redevelopment of an existing retirement home community be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscaping, screening, parking, et cetera. The rezone is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies this area as mixed residential, which includes low, medium, high residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial.
Okay, any questions for staff? Thank you, Chris. Someone representing the applicant in the room would like to come forward?
Yes, thank you. I'm Mike Young. I live at 215 Pauling Place here in Waterloo, and I'm a lawyer representing Friendship Village. I'm here with a few people from Friendship Village. We're all very excited to be here because this application has been a long time in the making. Friendship Village will celebrate its 50th anniversary in about two months. And some of the original Friendship Village facilities are, I'd say, nearing the end of their useful lives. And so, there were a number of options that the leadership of Friendship Village looked at. Some involved moving away, but they made the commitment to redevelop and reinvest in this neighborhood and in these facilities where they've spent 50 years and are looking to spend 50 more years. This is the West 9th Street and Park Lane campus. It will require some extra work, and that's why you saw in those plans different phases because the residents will live here. There are residents there now, and so it's going to require tearing down some garages first, building a new building, moving some residents into that, and then continuing in that process. But when it's done, it'll be a first-class facility that the neighborhood and the city and the Cedar Valley can be very proud of. All told, as it said in here, it's a $70 million investment. What's also important is that it keeps the use the same. You'll see in those plans we're talking about, you'll see IL, that's independent living. Most of the units in there, then also skilled nursing, so SNF you see in the plans as a skilled nursing part of it, but it's the same uses that are there right now. It's just there'll be much nicer facilities. I've indoor parking, different amenities like that. The application that you have, and it takes up most of the packet this month, is very detailed and a lot of thought and feedback has gone into that. And it's taken years. Friendship Village has always tried to be a good neighbor as that neighborhood has built up around it, especially with the houses, excuse me, on Fairlane and Crestline. And the leadership has held true to that during this process of redesigning it. So, we had multiple meetings with city staff, and they've been great to work with and also with the neighbors. So, it started with a meeting with the neighbors last June and then culminated in a meeting with them with a large group from Fairlane and Crestline here about a week and a half ago. And so, to be considerate to that neighborhood, especially this is the neighborhood to the west, those houses on Fairlane and Crestline. What you see is a lot of work went into making sure this reconstruction redevelopment happened in kind of a gradual way. So, the buildings are moved closer to the pond, closer to Covenant Medical Center, so that you've got more of that gradual kind of tapered transition from single-family houses with landscaping to duplexes, more landscaping, and then two-story, and then three-story, and then it tapers to four. But you'll see that the buildings are moving towards Covenant and towards the pond. To be considerate of that with the neighborhood. I also want to make clear, we're not taking any land for this. All of it will be done in the existing Friendship Village campus. There's no land acquisition at all. During the meetings with the neighbors and also with the city, we stated and made a commitment to be as open and responsive as possible because this is going to be a little bit different of a construction project again because it's phased and you have existing residents that are there. But during the construction process, we want to be open and responsive to everybody. So, I'm here with quite a few people from Friendship Village. There's Bill Clausen, who's the engineer, who can answer the kind of the technical questions about this. And also Lisa Gates, the president and CEO of Friendship Village, can talk a lot about kind of the practical and resident aspects of it if there are questions. And also Felda Phillips, who was Lisa's predecessor, kind of made Friendship Village what it is. And then Chad Wagner is here as well. He's the director of Plant Services and kind of knows all the ins and outs as well. But we are very excited to be here and present- But we are very excited to be here and present this, this plan, and looking forward to the reinvestment. It, it should be just a truly a first class facility when it's all finished. So we're happy to answer any questions? You were, anyone may have.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks to all of you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to come forward and present to us? Mr. Clausen?
Yes, Bill Clausen, I live at six forty five Sheridan Road in Waterloo. And, and there's just one correction, and there's a lot going on in this drawing, but the, the pool area is not in the floodway. Chris, I highlighted this for you.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to make a presentation either for or against this item?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
We have a motion to close the hearing, is there a second?
Second, Tyson.
Okay, moved and seconded to close the hearing with, unless there's further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And chair votes in favor. Okay, the meeting is closed. Is there any discussion regarding?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone request of fourteen point five acres from R two one and two family residential district, and R three multiple residence district to R four RP plans, for the reasons as stated on the agenda.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes in favor. Request is granted. Now, moving on to the special permit, we've already had the staff report, and I assume that really there's, well, do you have something to add, Chris?
It's very, very, very brief. I'm just gonna read the first paragraph of the staff analysis, just explaining, you probably already are aware of this, but for the public. The zoning ordinance requires that all nonprofit institutions of a philanthropic nature obtain a special permit issued by the Board of Adjustment after recommendation from the commission. This is due in part to its ability to be developed in many zoning districts, as well as impacts such as development can have on the neighborhood or public infrastructure such as traffic, sewer, et cetera. Therefore, staff recommends that the request by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated on behalf of Friends of Faith Retirement Homes Incorporated for a special permit to allow a nonprofit retirement complex to be redeveloped at six hundred Park Lane to allow for the redevelopment of the existing retirement home community with construction of approximately two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty eight square feet of total structure to be approved for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscaping, screening, parking, et cetera. The special permit request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which classifies as mixed residential, low, medium, high residential, professional offices, and neighborhood commercial.
Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you. I have to ask, is there anybody that would like to come forward and make a presentation either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one, discussion amongst commissioners? Or a motion?
This is Tyson. I would like to make a recommendation that the board accept the staff recommendation request by Wayne Clausen Engineering and Surveying Incorporated on behalf of Friends of Faith Retirement Home Incorporated for a special permit to allow a nonprofit retirement complex to be redeveloped at six hundred Park Lane to allow for the redevelopment of the existing retirement home community with construction of approximately two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty eight square feet of total structures be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes in favor. Okay, that, that is granted. That passes. Our next special permit is a request by the Boys and Girls Club for a special permit to allow for a nonprofit institution to construct a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty square foot building for the establishment of a teen and education center within a C two commercial district located at eight oh seven and eight oh nine to eight eleven East Fourth Street. We have staff report.
This is Western with staff. I believe all of you are familiar with this request, so I'm gonna be brief on this, so we can get home and have dinner. It's a very simple request, not very much is changed, with the exception of, the Boys and Girls Club is working to purchase, or, working on a deal with the current contract buyer of the building at eight oh seven East Fourth Street, and then the building will be donated to them. So once that is in place, they are planning to expand the building from what was approved. Planning is only commissioned, approved, recommend approval of a request for sixty five hundred square foot building at the September twelfth, two thousand seventeen meeting. The Board of Adjustment then approved the request at the September twenty seventh, two thousand seventeen meeting. Since then, it appears that they will be acquiring additional land, so they want to expand the building to ten thousand, five hundred and fifty square feet. And they're also asking for a variance to the required minimum parking requirements, a variance to the minimum five foot setback to allow the parking to be zero lot line. Therefore, staff would recommend approval of the request of the Boys and Girls Club of the Cedar Valley for a special permit to construct a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty square foot teen center building, a variance to the required minimum parking requirements, a variance to the minimum five foot setback to allow the parking lot to be zero feet from the north and south property lines, and to have a zero lot line along East Fourth Street within a C two commercial district located at eight oh nine East Fourth Street to be approved for the following reasons. The request would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would have a positive effect on the area by providing teens a positive place, safe place for learning. The proposed teen center would serve to generate excitement for an area that has seen minimal new development. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area. The request would allow the Boys and Girls Club to improve the ability to provide programs, activities, opportunities to the teenage population. The construction of the teen learning center may attract and retain more teens through all four years of high school, and with the following conditions, that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including, but not limited to, parking, landscaping, screening, drainage, et cetera, except as approved by the Board of Adjustment.
Any questions for staff? Okay?
Mr. Chair, I've got abstain from the vote, conflict of interest, I'm on the, on a committee for the teen center.
Okay, is that gonna cause a problem with the quorum?
No, this is Anderson with staff, so we've already established a quorum at the meeting.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak either for or against this item? Okay, seeing no one. Discussion amongst commissioners? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion, as before, I think that it's a great thing to do, and the parking, I think that we're fine on that, so I'd like to move that we approve the, to constr, the Boys and Girls Club of Cedar Valley for a special permit to construct a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty square foot teen center building, and the variance to the required minimum parking requirements, and a variance to the minimum five foot setback to allow for the parking lot to be zero foot from the north and south property lines, and to have a zero lot line along East Fourth Street within a C two commercial district located at eight oh nine East Fourth Street be approved for the following reasons listed, and the following conditions listed. And I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain? And the chair votes in favor. Our next item, we have any discussion items?
This is Anderson with staff, just to be aware, to the commission, we are starting work on the next census count. I don't remember if anything actually comes to the commission, but we're probably giving you some periodic updates on that as we start that. The first thing that we work on is the, basically going over the address list that the census organization shows for the City of Waterloo, and ensuring that all the, all the properties that are in Waterloo are counted in Waterloo. So we'll give you updates on that as, as we feel that there's something to update on, but that process is starting already for the, the two thousand and twenty count.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other discussion items, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are outta here, it's five thirty two.